...in fiscal management. Kyle is also just a few courses shy of completing his CPA certificate or being able to sit for the CPA. We are very glad to have him in the Finance Department.
Yes, welcome Kyle, yes.
Thank you for the introduction.
Childhood cancer is probably one of the most heartbreaking diseases that we can experience, and it is a tribute to, I think, all those young souls who have to experience such a tragic thing so early in life. So with that in mind, I would like to read this proclamation in its entirety, which says, and I'm reading this on behalf of the Mayor of Capitola, this is the mayor's proclamation, "In recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Week, May 5th through May 11th, 2013, whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. This tragic disease is detected in nearly fifteen thousand of our nation's young people each and every year, and whereas founded twenty years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and sister organization Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families, and whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provided a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to Northern California children undergoing cancer treatment in Kaiser Permanente Santa Clara Medical Center, Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families, and whereas through its uniquely sensitive and comforting Magical Caps for Kids program, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection distributes thousands of beautifully handmade caps and decorated baseball caps to children who want to protect their heads following the trauma of chemotherapy, surgery, and/or radiation treatments. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors nationwide courageous kid recognition, award ceremonies, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore I, Stephanie Harlan, Mayor for the City of Capitola, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize Childhood Cancer Awareness Week from May 5th through May 11th, 2013." And thank you, and I would just like to encourage anyone in the audience and watching on TV at home, if you wish to, you know, really help in this battle for cancer, not only being aware of the situation, but maybe contributing to these fine organizations that are helping to fight childhood cancer. So now we'll move on to item 2C, which is a proclamation designating May 15th, 2013, as Paint the Town Purple to promote public awareness for the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life upcoming events. And we actually, I think, is Linda here? Hi Linda.
Wearing purple. Wait till Wednesday.
And, well, maybe here I'll come down and present the proclamation. And again, this is on behalf of the mayor. This is American Cancer Society's Relay for Life, Paint the Town Purple. Thank you. I think this is on. Whereas cancer is a group of diseases characterized by uncontrolled growth and spread of abnormal cells, which is not controlled, can result in premature death, and whereas cancer is predicated to strike one out of every three Americans sometimes in our lifetimes, and whereas an estimated 171,330 new cases of cancer will be diagnosed in California in 2013, and whereas the American Cancer Society is the nation's largest and most respected volunteer health organization since 1913, and has funded research which has contributed to every known method for detecting cancer and techniques for treating cancer, thereby increasing cancer survival rates from 10% to more than 65%. And whereas the American Cancer Society is a volunteer, community-based coalition of local citizens dedicating to eliminating cancer as a major health problem, and whereas the color purple is a signature color of the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life event signifying the passion that cancer survivors, that families and loved ones feel for the eradication of this disease, and whereas Relay for Life financially benefits the American Cancer Society's research and patient support programs, including local programs such as Look Good, Feel Better, Man to Man, and Road to Recovery, and whereas the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life brings the community together to celebrate cancer survivors, remember those lost to the disease, and provide means to fight back against it. Therefore I, Stephanie Harlan, Mayor of the City of Capitola, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2013, as Paint the Town Purple Day in the City of Capitola, and encourage everyone to show support for Relay for Life and the American Cancer Society by displaying purple decorations and to wear purple in support of the war against cancer and in celebration of life and victory over this disease, and witness whereof, I here set my hand this ninth day of May in the year 2013." And Linda, did you want to add anything after that long string of "whereas"?
I would just encourage everyone, if they can, to wear purple on the 15th, and I invite you to come by City Hall. My family and I will be painting Town Hall purple. Chili's in the mall will be having a fundraiser, and workplaces and residences throughout Mid-County will be celebrating the day in preparation for Relay for Life, which starts on August 13th at Cabrio College.
Thank you, thank you. So remember to paint the town purple on May 15th, and thank you Linda for being involved in this great cause.
Thank you Linda.
Next, we'll move on to the report on closed session, and I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you Vice Mayor, council members. The closed session began at 6:00 PM in the city manager's office. All council members were present other than Mayor Harlan. The council discussed one item of anticipated litigation but took no reportable action. The council had a conference with its labor negotiator but took no reportable action, and the council conducted a performance evaluation of the city attorney but took no reportable action on that matter.
Thank you. Next, we'll come to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Council members, staff, seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. Yeah, please step up to the mic, and if you could tell us your name, we can get that for the record, and everyone will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Goran. I live in SoCal. I want to especially thank the police department because many years ago, we had a domestic violence incident, and this person called actually, who thought he's the intelligence of the police department, and the police officers arrested him because they recognized that he was actually causing the problem and not my mother and me. So that's why I actually worked last summer in a venue here in Capitola Village, and I feel a lot of gratefulness for this community because they somehow saved my mom from this violence. I cannot tell you enough how much I appreciate this, and I think you should be proud of having a police chief like this. I was always around to testify when the police needed somebody, and as I said before, I love Capitola the most in the county, and that's why I always take daily walks here. Thank you very much for having me, and have a great evening.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Hi Marilyn.
Hi Marilyn Garrett, part of Wireless Radiation Alert Network, retired teacher from Pawano Valley Schools where there's a lot of pesticide use. Listening to the presentation you made, Sam Story, about this month, Children's Cancer Awareness Month, I think it's critical to be aware of carcinogenic causes of cancer. We're dealing with the symptoms of the carcinogens put into the atmosphere, the environment, the food chain by corporations, and it's tragic to have children dying of cancer. It used to be unheard of. The top cancer now in children, I understand, is brain cancer related to cell phones. Used to be leukemia. When I taught in Pawano Valley Schools, a messy school was next to fields of pesticides. I saw a list once of one crop of strawberries, partial list of pesticides, nineteen different pesticides on one crop. When you go to the agricultural commissioner's office, they keep records, they don't stop the poisoning, and it'll say, "Bird killer, known to kill bees, carcinogen." It'll say that. These kind of things should be illegal. In May of 2011, the World Health Organization categorized the radio frequency microwave radiation from wireless devices like cell phones, cordless phones, laptops, cell towers, these 4G antennas, as a 2B carcinogen in the same category as lead and DDT. I have to say, I become very discouraged and have a sense of hypocrisy when I see people promoting these technologies, letting their children use them, being on cell phones as they're using apps supposedly to help. We need to be preventing the carcinogens from being into our environment, whether it's smart meters, or cell towers, or cell phones. I'd like to recommend some groups working on prevention. Citizens for Safe Technology, EMF Safety Network, Stop Smart Meters. And I think of Sandra Steinbrenner's writing in a book, "Living Downstream: An Ecologist Looks at Cancer in the Environment." She talks about a hidden violence, says it's intolerable to be regulating, monitoring, permitting known and suspected carcinogens into the environment rather than preventing their generation in the first place. She said it's a form of homicide. So I, that's the emphasis I think we need to be focusing on, and also these new 4G technologies are killing scorching trees.
Please wrap up.
I'm going to give you a picture of scorched trees from South Africa, and these 4G antennas, distributed antenna systems are going up all over. Here's a big picture of it. Whacked and scorched after 4G radiation technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
Hi, Brian McKenzie. I'm a representative of the Capitola Village Residents Association, and we take turns coming to the council meetings to take notes and whatnot and disseminate the information to our other members, and just wanted to remind all of the village area residents that we're having a dinner at Britannia Arms on May 22nd at 6:00 PM, so we'd love to have you join us. Thank you.
Thank you Brian. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council tonight? Yeah, please come up.
My name is Paul Pelkey. I've been a longstanding member here in Capitola. When I see a hundred and seven, 107 men and women being murdered, I have to stand up. If I have to stand up against you, you people, it's my duty, and this is for the record, on the record, and on video. My mom is a Japanese national, came into this country and was sexually assaulted by a military officer. We've been keeping this for a long time. I've been assaulted here in Capitola, I've been beaten up, I've been terrorized ever since I was a kid. First, I'll never forget to name Dick Patterson, who hit me with a stick, put me in the janitor's room, and left me there. I'll never forget that. I won't name my junior high prep principal, but then, my friend just passed away of cancer, Waldemire, when I was here last time, and I pretty much had the breakdown. And in my mom's passport, from the United States government to the Japanese government, I understand the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Japan, we request all those concerned allowed, Ms. Sasaki Pelkey, as a Japanese national, to proceed to the United States as an American and permanent residence, to pass freely without any hindrance, and in any case of need to afford every possible aid and protection. This was not provided. There was a hole in the gap. We fell down a manhole, as on the original, well, my mom's birth certificate, a marriage certificate, by the United States Embassy in Japan. Under the remarks, the party signed in the president, "notifications of this marriage requires an Article 739 of the Japanese Civil Code, and notifications to be witnessed." And now, since I'm getting low on time and you all cut me off, yes, 107 people on Flight 739 were murdered and killed, going into Vietnam. And basically President Obama and the Defense Secretary wants to know this, and I am letting you know this, that these people were murdered. Ten people, the air flight crew, were here, came from California, and two other people, one gentleman from Salinas, another gentleman from San Jose, was part of this crew.
Yeah, please wrap up Paul.
And I would kindly demand accountability, and I have let the Federal Bureau of Investigation know up in San Francisco, and I will continue this, because...
Okay, yeah. Thank you for coming up and speaking to us, and sorry to hear about the loss of your friend, Paul.
Because my mom had the same thing, and I'm being attacked by fiduciaries, conservators, CPAs, and I've already been robbed for over 200,000 on a fake special needs trust by lawyers here in Capitola.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move on in our agenda, which brings us to council and staff announcements, and we'll start with, why don't we start with staff announcements first?
I have an announcement. The American Red Cross is going to be conducting their annual blood drive in the city at Jade Street Community Center on Wednesday, June 5th, from 12:30 to 5:30, and there's some flyers in the back for more information, and all the donors that come to donate blood will be able to enter, to win a trip to Warner Brothers Studio in Los Angeles. So be sure and pick up a flyer. Thank you.
All right, thank you Sue. Any other staff announcements? Hi Chief.
Good evening, council members. Vice Mayor Story, just wanted to remind everybody about our gun turn-in program this Saturday. Countywide, all the law enforcement agencies are participating in that. It'll be from 10:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon at the community church at Kennedy and Monterey, so we invite you to come down. Just a few things to remember, to keep ammunition separate from the firearm that you might be turning in, make sure it's in the trunk, make sure not to walk up with a firearm displayed, and we'll also be having some gun locks there and gun safety information as well, so those people that do arrive will have that available for you, so.
Well, thank you Chief.
Can we put this on our scroll?
Yes, I will work on that for tomorrow, for sure.
Thanks, thanks Rudy. Thank you very much.
And also I would think some of those guidelines that you just mentioned, maybe those should be posted as well, so people understand.
We did put it on our Facebook page and on our department website as well. I'll make sure that's on the scroll.
And what do they do with the weapons, Rudy, when you take them in?
Well, at that point, we will bring them in, and we have to hold on to them for 90 days. It's a legal period, and at that point, then they would be destroyed. We'll have to go through the legal process for that.
Okay. They won't go back into circulation then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other staff comments? Hearing none, why don't we bring it up for council comments and...
I have a few.
Councilmember Terminy, why don't you start us off then?
Okay, I'd like to announce on the 16th, this next Thursday, a week from tonight, we'll have the Capitola Art and Wine Festival kickoff at Bargetta Winery. Get your tickets early or just come on down, starts at 5:00. The theme is Carnival, Venice Carnival, and there'll be a costume contest. Every single winery, all 23 wineries in the Art and Wine Festival, will be pouring wine. So, that's the first. The next, our own detective Leo Moreno is once again doing the Special Olympic Run. That will be happening in June. He's done this many years. You can make contributions to the Special Olympics through our Capitola Police Department. The Red Cross, the pleasure of being on the board of the Red Cross, and thank you very much Sue for announcing that, because our motto is, "We ask for your time, we ask for your money, and eventually we ask for your blood." So it's a great cause, and it is the only activity that we ask you not to give 100%. Next, the library. Once again, Sam, thank you, I'm having a great time at the library board.
Really wonderful to hear.
We have a library app, and it's just remarkable. It's if you search SCPL in your app store, on any phone, any smartphone, it will bring you up your virtual library. You can search every book that exists. You can search any book that you might want to read, and it'll tell you which branch it's located in. You can check it out, have it delivered to the branch of your choice, and more importantly, much to the chagrin of book owners or booksellers, this app lets you scan the book code on the inside cover and tell you if we have that book in our library. And if we don't, you can put a special request in for us to add it to our collection. It is the most remarkable app I've ever seen. So I have a question regarding the meters at Upper Pacific Cove. Maybe our city manager can speak about that. Hopefully, we're not waiting to, for all the lower temporary parking lot to happen before we can get the upper Pack Cove Park metered with pay stations.
We were kind of waiting to get final word on the financing, which is the financing for the lowered bar and the purchase of the pay stations, the upper lot. We got the pretty good, you know, not final word, but we did get word that they anticipate we will get final approval in the middle of June, so I think next week we will be ordering the pay stations that were previously authorized for Cliff Drive in the village, and we are going to include the pay stations just for the upper Pack Cove at this point in order next week, so we should have them in about six weeks from now.
Because we hate to miss this season, because the use of Upper Pacific Cove and these pay stations, there's significant money that we need to capture up there, for providing the parking for our wonderful city, for our wonderful guests. Question for the city manager and/or our finance director, we just approved prepayment of PERS in the library, on the library board, and we're going to save not an insignificant amount of money, 7% of our total PERS bill, we're going to save by prepaying a year's worth of PERS upfront. If we have any opportunities like that, especially with Lexington Settlement coming through, we should hear about that at some point.
Yes, we'll be bringing that forward along with some other options. At the budget hearing session, we'll be looking at some of the alternatives for paying down some debt or moving forward with some of those PERS prepayments.
Great. I understand we can save it to about 7%?
It may depend on the actuarial assumptions. We'll have to look at it because it's different for each agency.
Great. And finally, and I'm glad our Sentinel reporter is here, and to Lisa Murphy and the Sentinel reporter, I think the report today about an HR fine was a little misleading, or at least I was confused. We did not have a fine to pay. We were able to take the high road and do the correct process before having to incur a $3,000 fine. Thank you for that. Thank you Sentinel reporter, and that is all.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Terminy, I'll note that that item is actually on the agenda for tonight for discussion, so we can get a complete presentation on where we stand and what the situation is.
Great.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Yeah, Dennis.
The Regional Transportation Commission, in the production of a possible rail trail along our whole corridor, the San Cherry Scenic Trail, has taken the first step, and little did we know that we had national monuments on our north coast. All the rocks and reefs and outskirts rocks are actually a national monument, and so we are applying for a $21 million grant that gives public access to all those areas along the coastline. And so the first phase of the coastal trail, it looks to be, if this comes to fruition, along with financial help from the land trust, will be from Davenport to the city of Santa Cruz of the coastal trail, through Coast Dairies and through Wilder Ranch on up the north coast. Be fantastic open area for public to enjoy. It's a non-developal area, but it will allow for a coastal trail, and hopefully we'll get this grant, and we'll know within the next two months whether this first phase of our coastal trail, we're hoping the second phase will come from Santa Cruz to Capitola. So that's the plan.
All right, thank you Dennis. So next, we'll move to board commissions, committees, and appointments. I don't believe we have any this evening, so which brings us to the consent calendar. The consent calendar are in items that will be passed on one motion unless an item is pulled by either members of the public here in the audience or council members. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it to council members.
I'll move the consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I did have a comment or question about item A, the minutes of our April 25th meeting. Under item 3 on page 8 of that, I just wanted to, it states that the city attorney in his report out, it said Mr. Barisoni stated that the city will receive $1,350,000 as a result of the settlement agreement. I think that should more accurately reflect, because of what I recall is that Mr. Barisoni said that the settlement agreement was in the amount of $1,350,000, because after attorney's fees, the city will not actually receive that amount. So I would like to add that clarification to the minutes.
I'll make the correction.
Which, we have a motion now and a second to approve the minutes, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Will then brings us to the general government business for the evening. We have a series of, well, I guess these are not public hearings, but the first item is item 9A, which is a consideration of approving the general special event permit for the AIDS lifecycle event on June 3rd, 2013, sponsored by the San Francisco AIDS Foundation. Yes, Chief?
Good evening Vice Mayor Story and council members, Rudy Escalante from the Police Department. So last month, the officers from the AIDS ride had contacted the City of Capitola regarding an issue that had developed with their annual AIDS ride. It goes from San Francisco all the way down to Los Angeles. This is coming up on their 12th year, and it encompasses a seven-day ride. There's about 2,200 participants. There are several cities that they have to work with in order to make the... There are several cities that they have to work with in order to make this event happen, and it is a widely attended event. And what usually happens is the route goes on SoCal in the county jurisdiction. Well, due to some unfortunate timing, and the supporters of the event who are here tonight submitted their application to the county, and a short time after that, it was returned to them because they couldn't approve the route due to some construction by SoCal Water Creek District on SoCal. And so, they were kind of left scrambling for an alternate route. So they contacted the Police Department. We've met with them, and we believe that we've identified an alternate route that would take them through the city of Capitola on Monday, June 3rd. And the event goes from about 6:00 AM till about 10:00 AM. The riders leave the city of Santa Cruz out in Harvey West area. They traverse their way through town. They have several organizers, which they call roadies, that oversees the riders and make sure that they're safe. I've actually, in my past experience with the city of Santa Cruz, have worked with the AIDS ride. It's a very well-organized event, and they really keep a close eye on the riders. They are very disciplined when they do ride. And so, the pathway that we identified comes down Cliff Drive. They would obviously stop there. They have signage, and, which keeps the route flowing in the right direction. They come down across Stockton Bridge. They would make a right on Capitola Avenue, left on Monterey, a right on Park, and we've checked with the construction crews. It appears that they hopefully should be done in that timeframe, and they would be out, heading out into the county. And so, the riders are not all in one bunch. They kind of leave at timeframes, certain timeframes during the morning. So you would see various riders come through, but they're not all in one line. And then they would be on their way and heading towards Los Angeles. And so, in that, with that information, it is our recommendation that we would approve this special event permit so that they can hold the event. And I'm available for questions, and the organizers of the event are present if you have any questions for them, both Beth and James.
Are there questions from council?
I have no questions.
No questions?
Questions.
No questions? Do the organizers wish to make a presentation, or are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Yes, Paul, please come up.
Sounds like a pretty nice thing. We do a lot of nice things. Sometimes we do too many nice things, but then, you know, we didn't do a lot of nice things for the wounded warriors when they're coming through. But then, I've been through a lot of events. I've seen a lot of garbage being thrown by, and who's going to pick it up, unfortunately? That's my worry. That's my only worry, because now we have homegrown terrorists. We've got all kinds of things that are happening right now. I put more work on our police force, on this, on our, the gentleman behind me, the chief. And I worry about, you know, what's going to incur with cleanup, there's people going to be plastic and this and that. That's my worry, right there, is the environmental effect, you know, on the police force and stuff like that to keep everything and people contained.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Paul. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for...
Approval? Second?
There's a motion, a second, to approve the staff recommendation. Any further comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on now to the discussion regarding the benches at Perry Park and the public restrooms at Knob Hill. So just a note for the members of the watching audience, that the recommended action is to, one, permanently remove the picnic tables from Perry Park, and, two, continue to have the restrooms open during peak hour, park hours, excuse me, from 6:00 AM to sunset. Steve, you want to lead us in?
Yeah, Chief and I will both be giving a short presentation on this. Back in 2004, in response to some vandalism, we'd had repeated vandalism in the bathrooms, the city council voted to try a trial closure of the bathrooms at the Knob Hill pump station there, and they were closed for approximately two years. The Public Works crews, as they were doing maintenance there, had received repeated requests to reopen them from community members traveling through the park, mainly walkers, who, that was one of the few restrooms, public restrooms in the area. So after about a couple of years, they opened the restrooms, and vandalism seems to be better at that point. But later on, in about 2008, the picnic tables there, there's three picnic tables that are steel-framed with wood bolted on top of them, became a place where people were hanging out, loitering, and they had heavily damaged the picnic tabletops. So in 2008, we had removed them simply to the idea that we were going to, you know, clean them up and put them back in, and there was an overwhelming response from neighbors and other park users that the picnic table, the, how do I say this? The loitering at the park had gone down once the picnic tables had gone away, and requested that we not put them back. And so, we've kind of kept it in that state for the last five years. We have steel-framed picnic tables there without any wood, benches or seats on them. I think it's time that we make a final decision on the picnic tables. Just for your information, the chief's going to talk about police actions in the property, but we did notice this public hearing. We sent out notices to all the properties with 500 feet, and I've posted probably six notices around the park itself. So at this point, I'll hand it off to Chief Escalante.
So as far as cases that we've investigated over the last couple of years, in 2012, we had seven cases, case reports that we've taken. So far this year, we've taken two, so you can see that they're pretty minimal. The concerns that we do have there, because there are maximum escape routes, there are maximum access routes, and you're pretty well secluded with the inability to clean out any vegetation. It's an attractive area, by adding the tables back, that would attract more public nuisance activity. And so, it becomes more of a challenge with, given all those variables, to continue to monitor it and keep it safe. There's a lack of play structures, there's a lack of lawn area, so what it does attract is, we have quite a few walkers who go through that area, but with the tables, it becomes more of a nuisance issue for us.
Are there questions to staff on the recommendations from council members?
One question. Is the removal of the three tables and the bench, or just the three tables?
At this point, I believe our recommendation would just be the picnic tables. We would keep the bench there as a memorial bench that was paid to put in that spot. Does give people passing through a place to sit, but it doesn't seem to have the same attractions as the benches did.
Steve, just to be clear, are you proposing to remove the steel frames that are still there?
Yes.
That is, okay. All right.
We would remove, permanently remove them, take them out.
That's good.
Concrete over there where they are now.
And is there a cost associated, is it, of doing that?
We would do it with Public Works crews, so...
Okay. No additional cost involved in that. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, are there members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Yes, Paul, please come up.
You've taken down something that means very, very much to a lot of people who live here a long time. Before they closed off Perry Park, we used to go there and just sit on the benches and the table. It's like sitting, if you could imagine, in Henry Cow Park. Just the openness down there, and it brings me a lot of solace and solitude, just to sit on the bench, remind myself of the creeks down below, the paddle boats that we used to go up and down, to the Begonia Gardens and behind Margaritaville when it was Little Joe's, and this bowling alley was here. There's a lot of sediment, sentimental value there, rather than a monetary value than the issue of vandalism. It's a real shame we can't make it out of something else, just to bring, show some hospitality, not a bench to say, "Sit, come, and go. That's all we want you to do." Perry Park was a very beautiful thing, but then nowadays, the town has grown so much, there's so many people. Some days, it's trying to put a gallon of water in a pint container. It ain't going to fit, unfortunately. But then, that's all, again, I can just ask, you know, because I know, I don't think any of you guys has been around as long as I have, because I've been around when everybody's grandparents and everybody was a trust fund baby around here, and me just sitting back down here and just going, "Let's catch some Pollywalks. Let's get some crawdads." And that's what it means a lot, it means a lot to me. It might mean a lot, it probably means a lot to some of the people just like me who's been around, just like, I remember the guy who had the cabin right below Mr. Graves' house, right across from another friend's house, which I won't name, that's across the river, and the only access is underneath the bridge over by the trussel to get to that cabin over there. But then, there's so much sediment, and it is a waterway. It used to be, before it starts drying up of global warming.
Thank you. Steve, could I ask a follow-up question? Also, part of the recommendation is to continue to have the restrooms open from 6:00 AM to sunset. I know at one point, we had closed the restrooms.
Correct.
So what's the rationale? I mean, I think it was because of some of the same issues, but what's the rationale now? Why to reverse that previous decision? And will having the restrooms open contribute to some of the issues that we're trying to counter by removing the picnic tables?
I think, well, we have had the restrooms open for about, since, they were closed for two years from 2004 to 2006, so they've been open since then. I think there was a public demand to have them open from people walking through the park. We do not get the loitering in the bathrooms that we did with the picnic tables there. So I think there's, you know, they do serve a good community service now. If we get them locked up at night, and the Police Department's been pretty good, very good at that, we seem to have minimized the vandalism issues at the bathrooms at this point. We do feel it's worthwhile. They're getting vandalized about the same as all of our other public bathrooms, so I think the reason to lock them is no longer there.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council for deliberation and possible action.
And just to be clear, the picnic, or the park bench will remain in Perry Park?
That is correct. It will.
Great. I will move the staff recommendation.
Discussion.
Well, until there's a second, I don't, I'm not sure if we need to have discussion. So, is there any, is there a second to the motion? Oh, well, for purpose of discussion, I will second the motion. So, go ahead, Dennis.
It appears that we're removing the benches, not because of what they are, but because of the people that were using them. And so, we're reacting to an element that obviously we don't, it appears that we don't want in our parks. Now, if that is not a continuing problem, and I'll tell you, I walked through there coming from my house to Knob Hill, it's, you know, maybe once every two weeks, I'll walk through there. And over the years, yes, I have seen people sitting at the bench there, and it's obvious people do go buy alcohol there and from Knob Hill, and they walk back up. But I never thought, and Rudy, maybe you can correct me, I never thought of these people being dangerous. They may feel dangerous to someone walking by and not knowing what it is, but the people, the people that use it, now, if we would have had senior citizens sitting there, we wouldn't be having discussion today. So what we're doing are being reactionary to a problem in our community that's not the benches, it's the fact that we were saying as a community that we don't want people of this type sitting around in our public areas and using our public areas. And so, how far do we go with that? We've already fenced in completely the Rispin property. We're not, we, you know, we've asked to have it come back to us, certainly like to have it come back to us for a discussion. The school now is talking about doing a complete enclosure of a fence. How many public areas do we start closing down or setting down in the name of public safety when, and not taking the right step in correcting the problem that's there instead of eliminating a public area? My problem with Perry Park has always been, not the benches so much, but us being forced to do ADA requirements, which are important, has made it nothing but a giant trail, you know? And so, taking Paul's statement, people do stop in there and they sit and they use that park, and there's other uses for it besides passing through it. And so, is it best for us, the community, to keep, start taking out facilities just because we don't have a correct means of management? Or is this really that big a problem? These bench and tables, that big a problem for our community? And are they a bad thing? I don't see that they're a bad thing yet. I mean, I don't think they can't, we couldn't correct it with just a better type of policing, maybe, or finding some way to discourage people from doing what they're doing there other than removing picnic tables from that area. Is Noble Gulch next? We don't like the people sitting at Noble Gulch. Are we going to take the tables and benches out of there also? So, it's my response.
Thank you, Dennis. Mike, did you?
If, well, first, to be clear, correct, if there were senior citizens, families, mothers with children sitting at those benches, I wouldn't have a problem. And I do have a problem with people drinking and doing drugs in our parks, period. And I'll go on record as saying, "I don't want those people in our parks." Do I want to shut the parks down because of them? No. I think we do need to police them. I think the chief is acutely aware of it. If I had ever seen a family having a picnic at those benches, I might say something, but I never did. Can I walk it too? Because we walk the same neighborhood. I think that in this case, Noble Gulch Park is actively used by the community. I like it. That kind of activity drives away the illegal activity. We have, because of ADA, truly turned this park into a path. It's not really that much of a park anymore. We're not allowed to light it because of environmental concerns. So in this respect, and I know it's a slippery slope, and I know it's dangerous, you know, because if we take all the benches away from everywhere, no loiter anywhere, and people will get tickets for stopping as they walk. So I understand that, the ultimate end, but in this particular park, which is why I made the motion, I think we should take those frames away. Taking the benches, the wood of the benches and the tables away has had the desired result, and they're just basically monolithic eyesores at this point, but I'll yield to the chief.
I need to make sure I clarify something. I apologize to Councilmember Norton. What we are trying to address is the behavior, and there are certain behaviors that these tables have attracted, and the results of that behavior becomes more and more criminal activity, whether it's increased criminal activity where then it starts out as an infraction and then rises up to a theft or a battery or something worse. And so, that we're, what we're trying to do is address the behavior, so I apologize for not clarifying that.
Thank you. And I would also mention that, you know, our, all of our neighbor, Ron Skelton, wrote a very impassioned letter and spoke very rationally about the fact that on, just on the idea that we would allow these people who would break the law to make us remove these things, you know, it rankles you. And yet, I'm trying to be pragmatic and solve a problem and going with the staff's recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ed, did you want to?
Yeah, just wait a little bit. I spent today up there walking around, and this is obviously a very sensitive issue, because I agree with Councilman Norton. You know, the tables are there, they're great tables. I originally was thinking that, you know, pulling the two tables that are embedded in dirt wouldn't be a problem, but there's one that's in concrete, it's actually a pad, and what made me think was, it looks like we put in that path, and it only has three sides in the table, so that when the table was there, someone in a wheelchair would be able to wheel up to the table. So the concept and the basis, or premise for putting these in was great, but the realization is, is what has happened, and this is where the chief brought this to us, is, you know, there's a nuisance problem up there, and that's what the letters we got from the citizens were, there's a nuisance. And, you know, when I talked to people about what they wanted, they were mostly concerned about, well, sometimes when you take the walk halfway up the hill, you get tired and you want to sit on the bench. So that's why I think the question about the bench being there, because what does congregate there is the element that we don't want. And when I walked by today, I picked up two bags with beers in them that were sitting there that were quarter full. So that's the element we don't want. That's what exists. And the point that was made, I think maybe by Councilman Termini, was, you know, ideally someday in our future, I hope we open the Rispin again, and when we open the Rispin and we have the traffic flow, and we have people walking through there on a regular basis using that, the traffic flow is what keeps, you know, the people that are causing the problems we want out of there. Until we get that flow, it's probably better just to put Perry Park on hold right now, and I apologize for not seconding your motion initially, but I wanted to make the comment. I do have one question. When I was researching this, you know, it's definitely Perry... When I was researching this, you know, it's definitely Perry Park, but on all the Google maps, it says Perry Park. So I, it's, I don't know if we have any control over that, if we have any say, but when you go to the maps, it's Perry and definitely the sign says Perry. So I'm going to support the chief's recommendation also.
All right. So, yes, city manager, go after Google and fix that. I just want to, I think, emphasize the point and the reason why I'm going to support the motion is that this is about behavior. This is not about a certain class or, or type of people that may frequent this particular park. I mean, as the staff reported and the police chief reported, that the incidence of calls to Perry Park have been significantly reduced. And the issues of drinking and loitering in the park have been significantly reduced since the picnic tables were originally removed. And so to me, that's enough of an evidence that we should, you know, maintain that status to curtail the behavior in the park. And to me, that behavior is regardless of whether it was done by seniors, kids, or adults. And I also agree with Ed that, you know, when we go to look at the Rispin improvements, and I think that we will get there, that we should tie in Perry Park into those levels of improvements because having the improvements and the extension, I think, of the Rispin concept into Perry Park is what's going to create a more public access, more public use, and then to make it a more desirable place. So with that, I'll call the question. Maybe we could have a roll call vote soon, just since we may have some disagreement here.
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Councilmember Botter?
Yes.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye. The motion passes on a three to one vote. Thank you, council members, for a very good discussion on that particular issue.
I did hear some consensus, though, of us doing something with the Rispin here among everybody. Staff hear that?
Yes, absolutely. No, I, I think that that will be coming forth to us in the not too distant future. And I think that we all relish that opportunity to, to look at that project. Hopefully, I'd like to see it before I term out off the council, which is 2014. So you have a year and a half, Jamie.
No, he doesn't have that long. About four months.
I'd just, I'd like to see it before you become mayor.
We've already given him a year and a half.
I'd like to know that we own the Rispin mansion very soon.
Well, okay. We may have veered from the agenda a bit. So I'll try to bring us back to focused on the agenda items, which brings us to item 9C, which is the consideration of approving the implementation of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, sometimes also known as Obamacare. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the staff or report.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So what I have to report to you today with a couple of action items is the implementation of the Patient Protection Affordable Health Care Act, as better known as the Obamacare. As you know, it was signed into law in 2010. The health care act, the bulk of it, will be coming into effect on January 1, 2014, where employers who have 50 more employees will be having to offer their full-time employees affordable health care. And there's, I do want to start off by saying, this is a very, very complicated subject. There's a lot of rules that are still being worked out on the implementation. There's a lot of unknown, there's a lot of uncertainty. And the IRS is trying to crank out these rules pretty quickly. And a lot of us are trying to play catch up to get a better understanding of how it impacts everybody at the agencies. So briefly, sort of in a nutshell, if you have 50 more employees and you have to, full-time equivalent employees, you must offer them affordable health care. So the most important thing to keep in mind is what is 50, what does full-time employee mean? Well, by the IRS definition, it's 30, you work 30 more hours per week. And that is a very important distinction as you look to see who in your, your agency needs to be offered affordable health care. So although this new law doesn't come into effect until January 1, 2014, what you must do on that day is to determine who's eligible. And how do you determine who is eligible in your agency? You need to look back to what happened in 2013. So that's why it's really important that today we start to set these standards of how we measure these employees. So what our agency did was to look at what happened actually in 2012. And we did an analysis of all of our employees who are not benefited. Because currently today, our benefit employees do receive health care, the option to enroll into the PERS health care program, and they do receive a health care benefit, which we call the Flex Credit Plan. And so with that Flex Benefit Plan, full-time employees, the health care that the city offers, that plan is affordable under the definition of the IRS laws. So who do we have to go look at? It's really important to look at the non-benefit employees that we have working for us, which are the, under the IRS definitions, are called variable employees. We usually refer to them as seasonal and temporary employees. So we looked back at 2012 and we ran all the time card sheets for everybody to see, would we have somebody potentially in 2013, under those same circumstances, that we would need to offer those employees health benefits beginning January 1, 2014? So we did that and sure enough, I did find that we have under, look at the historical information, an employee in the recreation department who would fall under that, that variable employee category, which is this person worked, on average, more than 30 hours a week. One of the things to keep in mind is when you have that type of employee, let's say they kept working that same type of schedule in January, January 1, 2014, they, you would offer them, the law would say, "Okay, now you must offer that person the ability to participate in your health care plan." Now, this particular person wasn't benefited. We weren't paying them health care benefits because they were a variable employee. So if that person, we offered them health care under the law, we'd have to offer them to participate. The health care plan that we offer through PERS, according to this particular person's threshold of their salary, would not, that plan would not meet the definition of affordable. And so that person would have the choice to enroll in our program under the current situation without our, and let's say we didn't offer them health care benefits, or they could go to the health exchange that's being established in California and the other states as well. They would go to the health exchange and the intention of that, right, is to have a lower-cost health care option to purchase. If that person went for that, that option, the federal government would turn around, look at what their employment status was, who they work for, what's your salary and so forth, and say, "Oh, the health care plan from your employer was not affordable. Therefore, the city of Capitola in 2014 would be subject to the $3,000, up to $3,000 penalty for that employee." And that would go to the health care exchange. And that's one of the ways they're funding the health care exchange. So now what we're, what we've done, like I said, we did this analysis to see how impacted we are. We have one that we'd be impacted by. I took a look at who this person was, what was their history with the city, and found that this person worked for the city for six years in recreation as a variable employee with no set necessarily benefits at all. But at one point in time, several years ago, this individual crossed over another threshold, a PERS threshold. PERS limits the number of hours you can work without being a PERS-able employee. Well, they crossed that threshold, which is 960 hours. So for the past several years, this employee's been receiving PERS and, but does pay their contribution like the regular employees. So taking all of that into, looking at that, the amount of work this person does, the benefit to the department, and the cost to then turn around and take this person and make them three-quarter time, which is almost equivalent to what they're working today, they're actually working a little bit more off and on through the season, to make that person a benefit employee. And the cost, and I've slipped my mind here, I'm sorry. The cost, the net cost is $2,800 a year. So the question that's being posed to you is, would you like to proceed down that particular path? Which you, you have that option to do, is to make this a full-time, three-quarter time benefited person at the cost of $2,800. The other option is that we don't do anything. And then when 2014 rolls around, if they've averaged more than the 30 hours a week that, like they currently do, we'd offer that person the opportunity to enroll in our health care program. If the person declined and went to the exchange, then we'd be subject to the fee, the fine. And then, of course, the third option is to reduce that person's hours below 30 hours. So that's one of the actions I have for you tonight. The second action, and it gets, it's again a very confusing of how this works. The IRS, again, has set this, the ability for the, for employers to set this look-back period in order to determine, again, who's eligible and who's not. And they give you a timeframe. And you have up to 12 months to take any seasonal, temporary, variable employee and spread their hours out through a measurement period. So what I'm proposing is to set this measurement period to coordinate with our open enrollment of our benefits. And that's, that is what, there is flexibility there. So if I'd like to set the date, this is the second action, to set the clock ticking January 1 of this particular year, 2013, it's set it for nine months. And then we'd have what's called an administrative window. And that would be for three months. And that corresponds with our open enrollment period for our health care plan. It also gives us time to look at the employees, see if we'd be qualified, who wouldn't be qualified come January 1. So that's two measurement periods I just described. There's a third measurement period the federal government wants you to set. And that's called the stability period. And that I'm going to set, again, to correspond at nine months. I will tell you this is, and that will determine, that's how long you offer them the health care benefit while they're employed with you. It's a really confusing process and another, the tracking of this is going to be very difficult because for, when a new person is hired, say in our seasonal programs, like a camp counselor or junior guard, you have to start your clock ticking on that person and start measuring them and reassessing their, their, their hours and looking how they fall into this window. And not only do you have to track those employees and report to the IRS, you must track your full-time, ongoing employees. And you must report to the IRS every year what you've done with them, whether you've offered them benefits or not offered them benefits. So there's a, there's a lot going on here, there's a lot of moving parts. But what we are aware of is how we need to meet the standards for our current existing employees come January 1, 2014. I hope you all got that. I'm open to questions.
When you say that it, for this, the only employee we have that falls in this category
Yeah.
is going to cost us $2,800 more a year, but that $2,800 is not just a cost. We will have an employee that goes from 30 hours to a three-quarter time employee. So we'll have an already very effective recreation employee giving us more of their time.
They actually, I have to tell you, even work more than that. And that's what pushed them up over the threshold.
Right. What I'm saying is it's not just extra money. We're, we're getting more support in our recreation department.
Yes. You, you have a permanent employee as opposed to what, like a variable employee. There's a lot, I think there's a lot more commitment on an employee's part when they have become a permanent employee.
Right. And the three options you offered us, as I understand it, one of them is the high road, one of them is the low road, one of them is the lower road. Is that pretty much typified?
I think so.
Okay, good.
I, I think what you will find as people start to work their way through this, this program is a lot of people are going to be very scared because, again, it's really difficult to implement if you're a larger agency. For us, it's not so hard. So the, the larger agencies, they'll, they'll get, I think they'll get nervous and scared and they're going to cut back everybody's hours and take this and be, try to be safe and say, "Nobody will work as a seasonal temporary greater than, say, 25 hours." And now we know we're, we're safe. I think that's what you're going to find will start to happen.
Any other questions?
I have two quick questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
The $2,800 increase, that is what the amount, the cost to cover to provide health insurance? It's not actually a raise?
No, it's not a raise. This person is already at the top of their step.
Right. It's the cost to provide the insurance.
That's right. And it's a, it's a, there's a lot of things I netted through there in terms of how much did this person actually work last year? The fact that they do get PERS. And then now that they move into this other, you know, three-quarter time position, they will be restricted to three-quarter time, actually. So it'll be a little bit less working hours, but, and they already get PERS. So it's really, like I said, a wash, but it's $2,800 is the ultimate.
If my memory serves right, this is a position of, that, that fluctuates with our recreational demand? Is this that same supervisor position? And we go through periods of high and low? And right now, we're, this is a position where three-quarters actually seems to be the good fit for us?
It is. And what complements it is, is we do have other seasonal employees that come on board and who like to work during the summer only. They don't want to work any other time. And so, yes, it works as a nice fit, but this person-
Seventy-five, Jen, is a good fit for it.
Yeah, they work year-round, too.
Okay.
Lisa, are you looking for a policy on this thing or are we just discussing one employee?
Right now, I'm just discussing one employee. But there is a policy piece, which is your, the, the first action is that you have to take an affirmative step. And I'm, I'm just trying to take the safe road in terms of, the affirmative step by the IRS is to set your measurement, your three measurement periods. And so by, by doing this and having the council set our measurement periods, then I have a, a solid policy in place to show the federal government when they come and knock in that we set our period.
A little different response if we're talking about one employee. Then we're talking about making a policy statement where anybody else that comes along that works over those hours is going to do it. I think the city has taken a stance that, that part-time employees can only work so many hours. We've got to stand with that. And there's a reason, there's a financial issue that becomes, that could explode on us.
Oh, you're right. I mean, I think what we're doing is necessary. With this one person who, when we did the analysis, there's nobody that comes close, nobody. And, and it is definitely an eye-opener that we need to keep an eye on, right? And monitor our hours, make sure we don't exceed these. One, one for budgetary purpose, but two, this is the, the federal law and the standards that we're going to be upheld to are very strict.
But, but so if we're saying yes tonight to this, and is this only applying to one employee? And this isn't going to happen with another employee?
No.
Or is this going to happen with another employee?
No, no.
It's never going to happen with another employee?
Can I say never, never?
Well, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't want this to be a policy statement.
No, I don't think so. I think it's, you know, incumbent upon management to be very cognizant of this, how this works and to implement it and be very, we have to review it every month. That's the IRS regulation.
It's less a policy statement than federal law at this point. And we have part-time employees that are truly part-time, but we're also not going to take the one person who is regularly over part-time, all the time, and cut them back just to save and leave them out in the cold effectively. I think we're just doing the right thing here.
Yeah, I, I think the best way to think about this is that there's been a pretty significant change in the legislative framework around how health care is offered to employees. And because of that change, Lisa went back and she summarized, just took a look at all of our employees and said, "Okay, with the changes in the law, do we have any problems moving forward in 2014?" And there was just one employee that identified, that we identified that was working more, more hours so that under the federal regulations, basically, you're required to offer them insurance and historically, we haven't. So we're here in front of you tonight because, as staff, you know, it's, it's a council decision whether or not we're going to create a benefited position. We're recommending that that's probably the appropriate measure, measure to take. This employee has been someone who's been dedicated and worked for the city for a long time. And as I think, Michael succinctly summarized, it's sort of the high road in this situation. But we do not view this as a policy, a policy statement of how the city's going to deal with things. And obviously, compliance with federal law is going to be very important in the future in making sure that our seasonal employees and, which that relates to the, the stability period and these measurement periods that Lisa talked about, which gives us the ability to average people's hours out over a longer period of time. So we're going to have to take a real good look at that and monitor it over time.
Okay.
Any other questions from council members? None?
I'd like to go and make a motion that we-
Let me just go ahead and see if there's any member of the public that would like to address us on this item. Come on, Paul, you're batting three for three, so. Yeah, come up to the micro, come up to the microphone so everybody can hear. Yeah, come up to the micro, come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
It sounds like, just like what happened to me, uh, working at Zelda's. Full-time vested employee, working too many hours, fall and slip, and the next thing you know, I've got insurance companies coming at me, and they, they're throwing a ringer at me after working over, down there for over six to seven years. First it was Zelda's, then I noticed it was RLJ Incorporated, and that's, we won't say, you know, how connected Ed and Betty and, and John and everybody is. Next thing I know, it's about risk management, realistically, because I can't work right now. I'm going through second stage of the degenerative disease, second stage of spinal stenosis. I've got a metal plate and eight screws. I've been diagnosed in 2006 with peripheral neuropathy. I found Judge Thomas E. Clark guilty of misconduct on my own, because nobody else would stand up for me, except for me. And I truly understand why no names are being named, why, why Dennis's take part, because this could be a policy, like, like a Title II, Section 504 of the Americans Disability Act about disability etiquette. Because, it'd only be my opinion that, that someone's being put, put in this, in this situation, and we're flip-flopping. And I'll never get better, better again. I was just talking to Santa Cruz Medical Clinic about, you thought, you're, you're calling lumbago, and the Latin term? I, we, we just did the x-rays. I've got six more bone spurs coming in and narrowing of my spine. Hey, hey, lumbago. It's from over, overuse injuries and, overuse injuries and repetitive motion injuries over such, over such a long time. And working so many hours, I work, I work a position as, as three people. And you could, you hire that person right there at Sandalines, I talk to the boys, you had to hire three other guys to take my position. I don't call the, the head person, my executive chef, I call the, my food and director beverage chef, Mr. Paul Geronimo.
Start to, start to wrap up, Paul.
And then, the next thing you know, he goes, Paul, give you two weeks over at the other place, you got your job back, you got a position, but then, same accident happened again. An overuse injury, and then, a metal plate, eight screws in my hand, and, and I've lost, I've lost my freedom to work.
Time to conclude, Paul.
And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Now, Ed.
Yes, I'd just like to make a motion that we offer the, the position, go approve the salary increase and set it up for the open enrollment period in nine months.
Just to clarify, it, there's, it's not a salary increase?
No.
Correct.
Increase costs.
Increase costs.
I will, I will second that, and, you know, if I may, it is about complying with the Health Care Act. It is our, also our duty as public officials to support what has become the law of the land. There is, it's bad enough that there are people who are not employed, who are left to their own devices. There is absolutely no reason for any employer to deny full-time employees full medical, period. Not in this country. And I try not to blow my own horn. I am fortunate enough to be a principal in a company that has provided full medical coverage for their employees for 35 years. So, you can actually do it and stay in business. Papa Murphy. And, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to item number 10, which is council staff communications. Are there any? Do you have any more, Mike?
I have several items here. I will make them brief, I promise. The first is, is that on July 18th, I would like to check your availability, which is a third Thursday, to potentially hold a joint meeting with the SoCal Union School District Board to discuss long-term sort of relationship building between the district and the city. I'm curious if July 18th looks like a date that might work for city council.
Probably not.
Okay. If those dates don't, if those dates don't?
I would say maybe you could poll.
I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong month. Forgive me. Probably not.
Okay. We will do this by email. We will try some other dates.
Suggesting this be the arena right here?
We can do it another evening. The second thing I will note is, is that our next meeting will be Wednesday, the 22nd, which is a, a day earlier than our normal meeting for our budget hearings. And the last thing I will notice is that I was able to send Google a notice that Perry Park is improperly named, so we will see if it's corrected in future editions.
How efficient of you. Yes.
We'll see how that works for us.
Any other council communications? Oh, staff communications, yes.
Good evening, vice mayor and council. Just briefly, wanted to apprise you that we did receive an application for the Monarch Cove Hotel about a week and a half ago. It's proposing to add a 41-room hotel to the existing site, and that would, they would retain the existing Victorian structure on there as part of that project. Staff has hired a contract planner to help process that case, given our current staffing limitations. And we've also issued an RFP for a consultant to prepare the environmental impact report. That contract would be paid by the developer and would be brought before your council, tentatively scheduled on June the 27th for approval.
Just a question. I was under the impression that the new construction was a 31-room hotel.
The proposal would be to retain nine rooms in the Victorian structure?
Oh, and the existing historic.
And add 32 additional.
Got it. Thank you.
So, any other staff comments? Council comments? If not, well, well, seeing that the treasurer's not here, we'll pass on the treasurer's comments. Are there any committee reports? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting to our, a special budget study session of the city council and successor agency to be held on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2013, at 6:00 PM in these city hall chambers. And, good night, Capitola. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.